... wisdom, guidance, and understanding, knowledge to run Baldwin Park, touch the city council, Lord, and helping them to make the right decisions, Lord, for the city. Touch our Baldwin Park Police Department, put a hedge of protection around about them as they are out there in the streets, serving and protecting, Lord. And Father, we thank you for our schools, Lord, our future, that's what our children are, our future, and keeping them from all hurt, harm, and danger, drugs, and gangs, Lord, and that they will get in their hearts and mind a higher education and on into college. We're asking you to look upon our businesses, Lord. Many businesses are down around the nation, but we're asking you to uphold our businesses here in Baldwin Park, that they will prosper. We also asking you to look at the Middle East, Lord, the things that are happening over there and bring forth peace, Lord, and also with our military, to giving them wisdom in how to conduct their military strategies, Lord. And our president, that man really needs your help as well, Father. And so therefore, Lord God, this disease that's going forth and entering into our country called BOLA, that put a hedge around that, that it would just cease and give them wisdom in how that that thing will not spread throughout this nation, in the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Jackson. At this point, we can face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening to everyone. We do have a short agenda, believe it or not, so that's surprising for us here. This point, I'm gonna ask Madam City Clerk, or City Treasurer, Maria Contreras, for the roll call. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Present.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez?
Present.
Mayor Lieutenant Ricardo Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Maria Contreras, for the roll call. All right, we do have actually one presentation that will have Councilmember Monica Garcia read off, and that is the proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I will hand this over to her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So I requested that we have the proclamation proclaiming this month, obviously, as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I will just briefly read this. Whereas domestic violence is a major public concern for our state and nation, is now the single largest cause of injury to women, and whereas domestic violence affects people of all ages, racial, socioeconomic, educational, religious, and occupational segments of our society, especially children, whereas children from violent homes are physically abused or seriously neglected at a rate significantly higher than the national average and have greater risks of alcohol, drug abuse, juvenile delinquency, cognitive and developmental problems, as well as fear, anxiety, and guilt, and whereas public awareness and education about domestic violence are needed, as well as uniform efforts on the part of government, health professionals, law enforcement, religious organizations, educators, and community associations to address domestic violence through prevention, intervention, and treatment for victims and perpetrators. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council, along with the city clerk and treasurer proclaim this month as the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And, you know, as many of you know, several years ago, we introduced a program that provides advocacy for victims of domestic violence here in this community, and we're very proud of that program. More recently, a contingency of mayors and councilmembers have been formed to not only proclaim this month as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but also to help victims. And so what we are doing, and I've joined Mayor, Mayor Lutz from Monrovia, Councilmember Victoria Martinez, Councilmember Angelica Garcia, and others from the region, we are in the process of having a purse drive. And in the past, you had heard Councilmember Marlene Garcia also mention this, when there is a victim of domestic violence, the first thing that the victim does is think about themselves and their safety, as well as their children's safety. And so with, you know, in leaving that dangerous situation, they may leave their purses behind along with other items that are of necessity. And so to show our support, we are putting together and mobilizing a regional effort to have a purse drive. And so if you know of anybody that would be interested in supporting, please absolutely let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, councilmembers wishing to call on anyone's behalf, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to close on, so, but if I can take the floor. I just want, before we move forward, I want to thank everyone, the community, the business owners, you know, we just had the conclusion to our street fair, and I thought that it was an amazing, amazing experience to see from newborns to the elderly, everyone walking together in unity, enjoying such a great event, and so on. I know I have the Business Association here, thank you, I know that you guys were very instrumental in getting, you know, funding and helping out, and Mayor, everyone else, thank you for being there. And I hope that we can bring it back and really explore it for the future. I know Magda Turellis is in the front, she sent us a very nice note saying she really enjoyed it and hopes that we bring it back. So once again, just thanks to our staff, they worked really, really hard, it wasn't an easy event, and we were just trying to see what we can do with it. So hopefully, we can take what we have and build on it. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
First, I'd just like to thank our staff for putting together the senior prom, I think it was the 21st senior prom that we've had, it was a wonderful event, I think it was attended by more than 200 seniors, haven't seen that in such a long time. They had great entertainment, I think all the seniors were up and dancing, it was attended by all the councilmembers. So I just want to thank the staff for putting that together, and hopefully we'll continue to have those events next year, continue with those. And also to the staff and Councilwoman Rubio and Baca for putting together the street event, the street fairs that we've had for the last three weeks, they were very well accepted by the community. There was a lot of old friends that I hadn't seen in a long time, a lot of families that attended, there was car clubs there, there were just a whole number of events. We had, I think, more than 75 vendors, I think, that were there, so we had a very good turnout. And what I'd like to propose, maybe at a later council meeting, is that we could look at, first look at the cost and see if we could continue to have these events that are very positive in our community, maybe prior to every holiday, if not every month, but as the holidays come along, we can probably have at least a few during the, during the year. I think it helps the businesses a lot, and it really supports our local businesses and allows them to advertise more of the services that they have to provide to our community. So hopefully, we can do that at a later council meeting, have further discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, real quick.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
I'd sort of like to also thank everybody, the street fair was such, thank you Magda for, and the others that wrote such wonderful comments and came up to us and thanked us for this wonderful event. It truly brought out our community and our families. Sometimes, because we're so busy and our schedules don't permit it, we don't see our neighbors that often anymore, and this sort of brought us all out so that we could at least bump shoulders once in a while as we were walking up and down Main Street and saying hello to everyone. So I hope that we have it again, thanks, you know, to all the staff and everyone that worked so hard. It was a lot of work, but I think it was well worth it, and thank you very, very much. The dance, the senior dance, I've gotta say that I have never seen so many people dancing, and everyone would get up to dance, it was wonderful, what a wonderful, wonderful dance, what a wonderful night, and so many happy people, you know, that, you know, get to get out there and have a good time. So thank you again, staff, and everyone for putting that together, the beautiful decorations, the wonderful Brazilian dancers. We had a lot of fun, it was, it was really, really a wonderful event. And also, I would like to thank also, in talking about domestic violence, we have a wonderful domestic violence program here in Baldwin Park, and I'd like to thank Officer Cynthia and some of the officers that also helped with some of the issues here in our city, and to say thank you for having such a wonderful program here.
All right, thank you, thank you, Council.
May I just say something really quick?
Yes, City Treasurer Maria.
I also want to thank Helen and all her staff for putting up the Dia de los Muertos. The festival was really great, it was at the art center, unfortunately, it was at a different time, that was scheduled at the same time as the street fair, but, you know, those dancers were great, the little kids, the older people, and they had all this tasting of the wine and food and everything, they did a great, great job. And I also want to welcome our Valley County Water Vice President, Margarita Vargas, Director Alfonso Contreras, our superintendent from our school district, and Beverly from Channel Four, welcome to Baldwin Park.
All righty. Okay, so at this point, no further, I will now open up the public communication, anyone wishing to speak, please state your name, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Lozano, good evening, councilmembers, city staff, members of the public, and welcome, Channel Four and todo mundo. My name is Rafael Gonzalez, I'm the library manager of the newly refurbished, beautiful Baldwin Park Library, and I was hoping that our very energetic president of the Friends of the Baldwin Park Library, Amanda Serrato, would be here to join me, but she's not here, she had another commitment and she couldn't be here tonight. So I'll make the announcement, and earlier before the meeting began, I spoke to Councilwoman Cruz Baca also, but the Friends of the Baldwin Park Library are gonna have their fall book sale, starting on Saturday, October 25th, it's gonna be from 10 to 5, and that sale will continue the following week, on Tuesday, it'll be from 1 to 7, 12 to 7, excuse me, on Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, the 20, October 29th, it'll continue from 1 to 5. So I invite you, I know the Councilwoman Baca is gonna come over and help us, but I invite you all to come and support our Friends of the Baldwin Park Library. Beautiful Baldwin Park Library, it's gonna have, they're not gonna have a great, a grand opening, I spoke to our new CEO, Mr. Yatsi, but we are gonna have an open house. I wish I had the date for you, it's 10, you know, right now, we haven't been given a date, but we're told that we are gonna have an open house, so hopefully, we'll get that information soon, and we'll get that out to you. Tomorrow, we want to invite the families to Baldwin Park, we're gonna have a puppet show, it's Franklin Haynes, he's very well-known, well-recognized, you know, throughout the state, and he's a puppeteer and a marionette performer, it's wonderful. We had this program, Manny's not here, but we had this program during the summer at the community, at the community center, one of the rooms there, and it was, it was packed. So tomorrow, tomorrow Thursday at 6:00 PM, we're gonna have that program, and I invite you, invite you, and I invite any members of the audience and their families, so, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you very much, thank you. All right, moving along with public communication.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alfonso Contreras, resident of Baldwin Park. On your consent calendar item number 14, I spoke a little bit on the study session, and this is to install the monopole. Reading this is for the placement of the long-term broadband monopole on city property. Please note that normally, utilities pay the property owners a fee to set poles, towers, etc., including easement and fees. So I just want to make sure that you think about this decision, because this tower will be there 10, 20, 30 years. The city already has other additional towers or poles or trees that look like, there are poles that look like trees, and we do get fees for those. So I think there's a way that we can make some money out of it, instead of having to pay the annual piece. So again, it's your decision to make, but just look at this closely. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Moving on with public communication.
Hello, City Council, I'm Mr. Luna, in the audience. The soccer teams that you guys want to bring in, are we getting any money from these people? Any revenue? Or are we just giving the city away? I bring this subject up all the time, and it seems like lately, this city council is giving the city away. I am tired of telling you people, we need revenue. They put in a soccer field over there, is it free? We citizens of Baldwin Park would love to live free. You're gonna give the city away, you might as well give the whole city away, that includes all of us. But no, you give it to special groups. I understand this is great for the kids, but we need revenue, money. You people understand what money is? It doesn't seem like it. Gentleman wants to give part of the city back to Uncle Sam, he's got money, everywhere he looks, he's got money. Baldwin Park, you want to fix up the city, you want to fix this up and that, along the freeway corridor, there's plenty of property over there, you want to buy property, buy that. You want to give that away, give it away. Don't give nothing away, get something in return. You people do not understand that. We need to make money, so we can give out, help other things, do this, do that, take care of that. But without revenue, five million bucks, or whatever we may have, don't last very long. If you look in this agenda today, there's a lot of switching money around, take the money from here, put it over there, take the money from here, put it over there. This gentleman's gonna get tired of moving it around so much. You people have to understand, we need revenue. If you're gonna give free containers away, you can put one in my backyard, one of them smaller ones. I want a free container, I would love to live tax-free, but that's impossible. But you people keep going, you give this guy from the soccer team, you want to put these containers over there, what, so the graffiti can look better? That's all it's gonna do, folks, think about it. We just got a new graffiti truck, we're gonna wear it out in six months, because that's where he's gonna be 99.9% of the time. Why don't we look at this stuff before we tell some gentleman, want to put in a soccer field, I'll give you free containers. What, what are we doing? We can't give the city away. You people understand that? The city belongs to all of us. That means you folks, and us out here, and everybody else that isn't here. Why we're gonna give anything away is ridiculous. How many times does a person have to come up here and tell you folks that?
Your time's up.
There goes my three minutes again.
All right, thank you very much, Muelan.
John Rios, resident. I want to, Mrs. Rubio Cruz, you guys did a beautiful job at the street fair. You sing beautiful, Mrs. Cruz. Chief, your police officers were very courteous, everybody from the neighborhood, people that I talked to at the fair, they said, hey, this is what we need, we need to know who the police officers are. You guys walked around, gave the kids some badges and stuff like that, they were happy, they were happy getting those badges, you know. You were walking around, you know, everybody that was walking around, Jason was walking around, you know, talking to kids and stuff like that. I know he sponsors some of the little leagues in the area, you know, which is a big thing for them. But everybody that was involved, Manny Correia, he wasn't there the last day, but he busted his, you know, behind on it, he really went out, out of his way, you know. But everything was very good, everything that I've gone back, all the neighbors, my community in that area, they were all happy, you know. That's what we need. And I was talking to Mrs. Cruz during last Thursday, I told her we should bring it for the holidays, for the holidays, the vendors would go in there, buy toys or whatever, you know, it would be good, it would be good for the city. It's something to think about, you know, but it was very good. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. I'm Muelan with public communication, good evening.
Thomas Carey, a former resident and resident of California, California, the giveaway state, and they're giving away driver's licenses, but some people can't wait until January of 2015, they gotta drive now and get themselves arrested and get put in jail on hold for some reason. What part of no driving without a license doesn't anybody understand? And they claim to have insurance. When you don't have a license, you don't have insurance, the vehicle owner does, and if the person without the license has an accident, guess what's gonna happen? The insurance company's gonna say, we don't cover unlicensed drivers, and they're not gonna pay, so guess who's gonna get sued? The vehicle owner, the one that owns the car, that has the registration with their insurance. They have to have insurance to register that car, but that doesn't give a carte blanche to let every unlicensed driver in the city drive that car. The insurance company finds out, they will cancel you, and you get canceled from auto insurance, you're gonna have a hard time even getting insurance from GEICO, much less any of the rest of them, because they're gonna say, you let unlicensed people drive your car, and they crashed, and you got sued. So maybe you don't care if you lose your house, maybe you don't have a house, maybe you don't have anything to sue for, but that could lead to a deportation, I would imagine. I don't understand. What's next? They demand a commercial license? You're gonna give them that too? You don't have to have any training, you don't have to do anything, you just come to the country illegally, and you expect us to fork over everything? A driver's license is a privilege, it is not a right, that's a big difference, and with a driver's license, also comes with maintenance of the vehicle, working lights, good tires, good brakes, all that comes with a license too. Everybody says, oh, you need a license. Well, yeah, you need a license to get insurance, and you gotta maintain the vehicle you're driving. If you're driving around with lights burned out and things that don't work, you're gonna get pulled over by the police, that's their job. If your lights aren't working, you're gonna get a ticket, if you don't have a license, they might even tow the car away. Good, tow it away, I don't care, tow it away, you're not supposed to be driving anyway. I don't know about the 30 days, but maybe they should hold it for 30 days. That sends a message. They keep driving anyway, thumb the nose at the law, that's what they, many years ago, they sued for more buses, they got that, that wasn't good enough, now they're demanding driver's licenses, what's next? They gonna demand a plumber's license too, you gonna give them that, electrician's license? Where does it stop? You open Pandora's box?
Thomas, your time's up.
And it goes on and on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Thomas.
Good evening. Good evening, Margarita Vargas. I just was reading the number 12 in the consent, and I just wondered, it says that the city council, of the city of Baldwin Park, suspending enforcement of certain provisions of the Baldwin Park Municipal Court regarding sex offender residence and movement restrictions. I think I understand what it means, but it means that they can live here, anywhere, anywhere they want, or where, I know you cannot answer me, but, you know, this is not clear what you're doing, because it says some provisions, so I wish it would be clear.
Well, I will, I will be pulling it during consent calendar, and I will be reading it off, so and explaining it further.
Okay. You know that I work in a school, and I knew about a lot of sex offenders?
Yes.
And, you know, it's not nice to live around you and all these kids there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, and
Thank you, good evening.
fellow councilmembers. My name's Roxanne Bickham, I'm with the American Cancer Society, and first of all, I'd like to thank you for your ongoing and continued support for our local Relay for Life event. I am out here to help educate and advocate, which is what we do, the Relay for Life is our fundraising arm, which helps to provide free services for cancer patients. So in front of you, you have a flyer that I would like to ask of you today to continue to please help educate your residents in your community about the free services that are available to them if they're going through cancer treatment. A couple of them that I would like to highlight is our Road to Recovery service, which helps to transport patients to and from their treatments if they are unable to transport themselves. We have our Reach to Recovery, which is specifically for women who are going through breast cancer, which is very appropriate for this month, if they need support while they're going through their treatments. And then our Look Good, Feel Better program, which helps women going through active treatment of chemotherapy or radiation, it teaches them how to reapply makeup and deal with the skin changes, how to deal with hair loss. We have free prosthetics through our Pasadena office at our Wig Bank, so a lot of folks don't know that there is, services are available, so I just ask that you continue to push that information out to your residents, so that they know that they have it available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Muelan with public communication. Good evening, Mr. Tuttle.
Good evening. Greg Tuttle, business owner. First of all, I'd like to, the street fair, Susan, thank you, you did a good job organizing, Cruz, thank you, and it really was a good turnout, even the mayor came out the last time, and he was very happy.
I complimented you guys.
And I want to thank, also, he mentioned the Business Association, thank you up there, and the Police Department, fantastic, handing out stickers for the kids, really proactive with the community, which we needed to get back in with, and it was a good job, chief. Everybody was there, and all your staff was there, even you showed up two times, so thank you very much, and Craig, we missed you on the third time, but that's okay. But it was really a good event, and we really appreciate what was happening, the people want to see a lot more of it next year, and I think the city can focus on that, and it can take out of the business funds to help the businesses to get out there. And Manny Correia's job, I know he's not here, but, you know, he did a great job, and that little Maria, she's like the Energizer Bunny, she's all over the place, she didn't eat her dinner till everything was over and done at nine o'clock, she's eating dinner and talking to me about the next time. Now, another serious note, at the last special meeting, when you had two special people up there from a realty company slamming your staff, that they don't know what they're doing, and they had to use their services, and nobody seemed to stick up for your staff. I think you have a damn good staff here, and I think that they're very well-educated, and that somebody needs to stop people when they come in and start bad-mouthing the staff, that they don't know what they're doing. And I think that should be the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and you people need to step up, because this thing here got out of hand, and that's all I heard, was these people did this, and that's not right. These staff members, you pay them good money to do their job, if they're not doing their job and they don't handle it right, then you need to talk to the council, and you need to find new people. But I think you've got a good staff here, and you need to stand behind them. This is not the way to handle this, and these people want to come in and handle things like that, I just wish I was at that meeting. I'm sorry I had to miss it, but I had to take care of my granddaughter. But I'll tell you what, I won't miss another one, and if these people show up again, I'll let them know my opinion of it, because this is not the way that you deal with cities, and you don't do business that way, you don't intimidate people, and that's not how you get business. And obviously, they seem to think that's how it's done, but that's not gonna be how it's done here in Baldwin Park, if I can help it. So anytime that this kind of a special meeting, anybody comes up here, they have a right to say, okay, I'd like to do business in the city, but not intimidate and insult your staff that they don't know what they're doing. Okay, I think we've got very good educated staff, I talked to the people beforehand on a lot of this stuff, and they know what they're doing. Mr. Wall?
Mr. Tuttle.
Craig raised. You cut me off? Oh my.
That was quick, all right, thank you, Mr. Tuttle, thank you, and great, great job out there, and best. All right, Muelan with public communication.
Good evening, Mayor, city officials, everyone that's present. Magda Turellis, I've been a resident here long before Walmart, I ever heard of Baldwin Park. Domestic violence, very important subject, we all need to get involved, we all need to do whatever we can to help, I know I will be, and hopefully, Monica, sometime this week, I'll give you a chat and see what I can do to help. Yeah, street fair was a blast. Let me tell you, I ran into neighbors, I didn't know if they were dead or they moved away, but it was nice seeing my old neighbors, I met new neighbors, I had a great time in my little scooter, and I didn't run over anybody. I had a great time in my little scooter and I didn't run over anybody. Which is great, because I don't have insurance and I never took a driver's ed. So that was fun, had a great time. I'm so hoping we do that again. It brought the community together. And it certainly did so much to make people happy to be living in this city. There are businesses, all these years I've lived here, didn't even know they existed. And I met a lot of new business people that were doing an outstanding job with our community and helping people. And just a fun affair. So I congratulate all those who were involved and... Chief, you know, the kids in my neighborhood, when they see the police, they run inside. And now, you know, with the cops being out there and handing out stickers and chatting with the kids, they're in love with the police. What a difference. And that makes a difference in the way that they behave in our streets. So, that was great having the policemen out there. I've met a lot of new officers, outstanding individuals. I didn't even know half of these people existed. But I hope we find money or whatever revenues it takes to continue doing that. Dia de los Muertos, yeah, sad thing that... You know, I'm from New York and I never heard of that, just like I never heard of a taco or a burrito till I came out here. But that's a very good thing, I certainly have a lot of respect for that. And that's something that we need to get our community involved, just as we've done with the street fair. Let's see. Yeah, things have been going good in the city, so that means that we're doing an outstanding job. There's always gonna be a few little problems, but it's not anything that we have not been able to overcome. So, anyway, we've got Veterans Day coming.
That's right.
And hopefully, we're gonna do an outstanding job as we have done over the years. And Happy Halloween, everybody, be safe.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, moving on with public communication. All right, we do have one more. All right.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council, members at large and audience. We are from St. John the Baptist School and we would just like everybody to know that we are holding a school fundraiser to help with financial assistance at our school. I'm sure as everybody is aware that there have been very... Lots of financial crisis is going on with families, especially here in Baldwin Park and other communities as well. And unfortunately, our enrollment has been decreasing on account of that. So, in order to keep our students who deserve to be at the school and whose parents want them to have a Catholic education, we are holding a school fundraiser. And like I said, all monies will go to help assistance with those who need it. We do have raffle tickets that are, will be available. If anybody would like to purchase one, they are a dollar. First prize is iPod Air, second prize is Playstation, third prize is Delvenue and fourth prize Samsung Galaxy Tab. They do have candidates that are especially trying to donate money. My daughter, Angelina Sandoval, who is a third grader at St. John the Baptist School, is one candidate. And the winners who receive the most money, that bring in the most money for the proceeds, will be able to present a baby Jesus at our Christmas program and for our Christmas mass at the church. So, and she also gets one month's free tuition to help. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we do have the form here for the checks, thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication. Seeing none, at this point, I will go ahead and declare that closed. At this point, we're gonna go to consent calendars. I'm gonna go ahead and pull item number 12. And item number 14, which is approved, the agreement with the Joint Powers Authority for the Los Angeles Operable Communication System, we'll pull that out for a future meeting at the request of Larique, is that... All right, LA Rex, excuse me. All right, so council members wishing to pull any other items? No other items are to be pulled? Okay, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion with the exception of number 12.
12 and 14, you mean, right?
Yeah, oh, you want, yes, yes.
Oh, I mean, I don't want to pull...
Oh, you're right, you're right, sorry about that, yes, 12 and 14? That's my motion.
Okay, so, a second.
Any objections? All right, seeing none. All right, at this point, let me bring up number 12. And I'm gonna read an ordinance so that all the residents are aware of this particular ordinance. And of course, it's very controversial. There are numerous cities throughout the state of California that are being sued because of the preemptive law that the state of California has placed an actual loss against the sex offenders. So let me say this, the subject is suspension of the chapter 133 of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code. The city, the city sex offender ordinance is codified in chapter 133 of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code, which was enacted in December of 2006. The chapter regulates residencies of sex offenders, loitering by sex offenders and returning to location after the sex offender has been asked to leave. Section 133.02 states, "It is unlawful for any sex offender to reside within 2,000 feet of any children's facility within the city." Section 133.3 states, "It is unlawful for any sex offender to loiter within 300 feet of any children's facility within the city." Section 133.04 states, "It is unlawful for any sex offender to return to any locations within 300 feet of any children's facility at any time after having been notified to leave such children's facility by the owner or any authorized official of such children's facility." Collectively, this chapter regulates where a sex offender may live or move. However, there are two cases that call into question whether such regulations are permissible. First, and it's the Taylor, is a case in which Pino Code 3003.5 is being challenged and as unconstitutional and it's currently pending before the California Supreme Court. Next, People versus Gwen appears to support the argument that movement restrictions are preempted by state law. Because chapter 133 of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code contains both movement residencies restrictions and was enacted pursuant to the authority provided in Pino Code 3003.5, both provisions are called into question with respect to the preemption issue. The city attorney's office has been monitoring such regulations and based on the independent analysis, believe that there is a possibility that both regulations may eventually be found to be invalid. It is for this reason that the city suggests at least suspending enforcement of chapter 133, pending judicial determination of the validity of Pino Code 3003.5. So let me just make it very clear that the city of Baldwin Park, the Police Department, is going to continue to enforce the law as it relates to sex offenders. Want to make that very clear. We are not, we are, the municipal law itself is currently just being suspended. The city of West Covina passed the, an actual, the same ordinance that we're looking at, suspending on a temporary basis. There are literally hundreds of cities that have been sued. We cannot afford to place a city ballpark in a litigation mode. It would not make sense for us to be in that particular area. And there are, this case will be also heard in the California Supreme Court. And the actual People versus Gwen, they were successful and those cities were sued from within that particular area. So I want to make it very clear, as we're letting all the residents of Baldwin Park, that the Baldwin Park Police Department and that the city council is not putting it to the side by not enforcing the law. It will continue to be enforced because there is a state law that preamps the local municipality law. So I just want to make that clear for the record so that everyone knows and that we are not by any means attempting to remove what we currently have intact. We are, again, going to see what the California Supreme Court does once it sees the actual case itself. So I want to make that very clear for the record. So, what I will do at this point right now, will move resolution number 2014-039, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, Suspending Enforcement of Certain Provision of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code Regarding Sex Offender Residencies and Movement Restrictions." So that is, that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. So I want to make it very clear, once again, we are going to obviously wait and see what the California Supreme Court does, but at the same time, not place ourselves in a litigation. Because there has been literally hundreds of cities that have lost to this lawsuit and we're talking about thousands of dollars and we're not going to place ourselves. We're going to look, stay back and look before we enact anything on our own. So, I just want to say that for the record. All right, at this point, we actually have nothing else other than we're going to go into council requests. But before I go on, I just want to acknowledge Ms. Woods. If you could raise your hands back there, I have not seen you at a city council for quite some time. And I know that you, and I know that you and Mr. Woods are inseparable. If I don't see you here, since we're lit, since you're my neighbors, I see you in the blue truck. So, haven't seen you in a while, thank you and I'm glad you're in good health. And I want to thank everyone. So at this point, I will move for adjournment. Any objections? Seeing none, so move at this point. Vive Baldwin Park, good evening. Hama nos.